Good evening and welcome to the May 10th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation. If everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray.
God our Father, we gather for this meeting and as we gather, may we be guided by your wisdom, your love, and your abiding presence of your Spirit. For your wisdom teaches us about what is truly important and gives us the courage to do the right thing. Your love reminds us that our compassion is not only for those we think deserving, but for all people who are in need. Your Spirit empowers us to recognize the ways in which we are blessed and, Lord, to build a community of learning that is characterized by joy, creativity, and a spirit of service. Lord, in all that we do, may our words and actions always be pleasing to you. Amen.
First on our agenda today this evening is our agenda review. Do not believe we have any changes to our agenda, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sirs.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary and Mr. Vic Johnson, all in favor? Thank you. Now to one of our favorite parts, if not the favorite part of our meeting, is special recognitions, and I'd like to call on Kim Marion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Emery, Madam Chair and Board of Education and our audience, it is always a pleasure and an honor to be here before you. And tonight I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing two of our Magnet School of America Award winners. Magnet Schools of America, the National Association for Magnet and Theme-Based Schools, is pleased to announce the recipients of its 2016 National Merit Awards. These 258 public schools and programs located in 19 states are recognized for their commitment to high academic standards, school diversity, specialized curriculum and instruction, family engagement, and community partnerships. This year, 371 schools applied for the National Merit Awards, making 2016 the most competitive year in the award program's history. The announcement of our National Merit Awards is an extraordinary time for the Magnet School community, said Magnet School Director Tom Mann. This is a way for our association to recognize the most accomplished Magnet Schools in the country. These schools are making a lasting positive impact on the lives of our children. They are preparing them for the challenges of the future by providing them with unique learning experiences that give them the critical skills needed to be workforce and college-ready. To receive a National Merit Award, Magnet School of America member schools must submit a detailed application that is scored by a panel of educators. These schools are judged on the demonstrated ability to raise student academic achievement, promote racial and socioeconomic diversity, provide integrated curriculum and instruction, and create community partnerships that enhance the school's theme. There are two categories of Merit Awards. The first is the Magnet Schools of Excellence, which is the top Merit Award given to a select group of Magnet Schools. And secondly, the Magnet Schools of Distinction, which is the second highest award of recognition. So tonight, it is my honor to announce that RJ Reynolds High School was the only high school in North Carolina recognized as a Magnet School of Excellence. And Mr. Trippi is here to represent RJ Reynolds tonight. So congratulations to Reynolds. Reynolds was also only one of 26 in the nation of high schools that were recognized, so the only high school in North Carolina, but the one of 26 in the nation. Mr. Childers couldn't be here tonight, but Atkins is also recognized as a School of Distinction. His daughter came in unexpectedly, so he apologizes, but he said, "Family called," and we certainly understand that. But Atkins High School is a School of Distinction this year, so congratulations.
Hello, how are you doing? Good to see you.
It's on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present Reynolds with the certificate of recognition. We are proud of all the hard work and the great things that are happening in the building. And all it takes is to stop by the school and see the amazing diversity of things that are happening, and it's great. It's a good feel, a great place to be, and so thank you for all your hard work. And we also want to thank Kim Marion and her support of our Magnet Schools and Magnet Program in the district, so thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Awesome, awesome. Good job. Thank you. And next I would like to recognize Matt Dixon.
Good evening, Dr. Emery, Ms. Jones, Board. It's a real privilege to be here tonight to recognize some hard work that's been going on all year. Every year, we host a number of student teachers in our district. This year was no different. We hosted over 100 different student teachers throughout the district. Due to time constraints and colleges being done, we were able to capture a few of those to come back tonight, so I'd like to present to you just a few of our student teachers from this school year. So first is Courtney Woodbury. She's from UNCG. She's a student taught at Hall Woodward Elementary under Brittany Malloy. Next is Jessica Teague from Winston-Salem State University. She's a student taught at North Hills Elementary under Ms. Brashler. Michelle Odom from Winston-Salem State University, student taught at Spies under Ms. Cardona. Matt Strand from Wake Forest University, student taught at Mount Tabor under Mr. Arthur. Sierra Hutchins from Salem College, student taught at Abraham Elementary under Ms. Britt. Lenika Martin from Salem College, student taught at Walkertown Elementary under Ms. Hannah Keeney from Appalachian State University, student taught at Morgan Elementary under Ms. Sams. Destiny Jones from Winston-Salem State University, student taught at Flat Rock Middle under Ms. Riley. Zack Gordon from Wake Forest University, student taught at Metalark Elementary under Ms. Gaylord and Ms. Gallagher. And Holly Adams from UNCG, student taught at Union Cross under Ms. Striplin. And these are just a few of the 100 or so student teachers we had this year. And student teachers, we'd like to thank you for your service and hope to see you back at our state orientation next year, once you get hired on in the district. So if you would, if you want now, I'm sure the board wants to shake your hands now. And you can lead the train around. Yep, there you go.
You're coming back to join us.
Ms. Montague Davis was already hitting them all up in the hallway for jobs.
Glad you could come. Look forward to seeing if you can come back. Good, right? Oh, good. I'm so glad you're here. I hope you'll stay in our district. I hope you guys will stay in our district. Yes, thank you for coming. I hope you'll stay in our district, right? Hope you'll stay with us. Thank you for being here. We do hope you'll stay here. Stay.
Consistent theme, but we do want to thank them and thank them for, and we hope that they will consider staying in the district. So we appreciate all their hard work this year for the district. Next, I will call on Benika Thompson for special recognition.
Good evening, Dr. Emery, Madam Chair and School Board members. Sir Isaac Newton said, "If I've ever, excuse me, if I've seen further than others, it's by standing on the shoulders of giants." And tonight I stand before you to recognize a giant in science education. I promise I won't cry. I love this woman. Ms. Iris Mudd. Iris is currently an eighth-grade science teacher at Metalark Middle School. A 28-year veteran and master teacher to note, Iris received several accolades in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to include 2011-2012 Teacher of the Year. Most important of her accolades are the many she receives from our colleagues every day because they benefit from the example that she sets for us in science, of her compassion for all students and generous contributions to the district and the state's science professional learning communities. Tonight, we recognize Iris as a recipient of the North Carolina Science Teachers Association and Atkins Middle School Distinguished Service Award. This award, also recognized by the North Carolina Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education Center Board of Directors, is presented to a teacher who exemplifies excellent, creative, and innovative teaching in science. Iris, I am truly honored to not only introduce you and share your accomplishment tonight, but to express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for colleagues like you who value all children and inspire all who encounter you towards excellence in science. Congratulations.
Maybe I shouldn't say anything, but I'm telling you, if it was not for the support of Benika, David, and central office, I couldn't do the job I do. I truly mean that. I mean it.
That's wonderful. You can tell you have a lot of respect for one another. We do, and that's great. We're crying. I mean, I don't know how many times we've come to a board meeting and I can't seem to get past the first 10 minutes without a tear, so that's a good thing. That's a good thing. So on behalf of the Board, we want to present you with the certificate of recognition, tell you how proud we are of you. I thought the story that Kim Underwood put up on our website, just really, you could, it captured, I think, you and your personality. And the thing that I love best, I think the one quote out of there for your students was that you will learn more from what you do wrong than what you do right. And I appreciated just that you're teaching them life lessons as well. And it's huge, and as you talk to others, that your colleagues, what respect they have for you and what all that you're doing for all of our students, and we just thank you so much for your dedication, and we're glad that you're here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County.
Me too.
So I know the Board, do you want to say something?
You know, I just, I know you guys got stuff to do, but...
This is our favorite part. Go ahead.
I truly mean it. If there's something, I've never had administrator that I was not supported by, that I didn't truly love. I love students, and I can be the tiredest ever, but if we're with those students, it's just like batteries. Our batteries get charged, and I just can't point the finger at one person. And the parents, my gosh, the parents that support us, just, I have an inspiration file, and every time they send something positive, I just file it in there, and they're just, I mean, I'm not kidding you, it's just not one person that supports. It's Benika, David, it's even Carol, she's not in here now, but every, there she is, okay. All right. Every time she comes to that school and she walks in that door, her face lights up, and it's just, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate everybody. Thank you, Lord. Okay.
We could just adjourn on that note.
That's the message. That's the message. I liked also hearing the inspirational file, so great, great things as we're staying positive and sharing our stories. So next, we will move to public comments, and I believe I have two signed up. Ms. Rhonda Gordon.
Good evening. Chairwoman Jones, the Board, Dr. Emery. Tonight, I want to speak on the addendum to food service agreement. There are many communities in Forsyth County where people have to travel more than two miles from their home in order to reach a supermarket. There are still families who are not able to take advantage of choosing to purchase fresh produce or healthy items. Some families may not even have the financial resources to buy and purchase quality foods to place on their tables. Often, the breakfast and lunch served at our schools are the only balanced meals some children receive daily. A number of our schools have the backpack programs. This is where they send home food on Fridays with children with hopes that they will at least have something to eat over the weekend until they can make it back to school on Monday. So for a child to not have food in the summer, it would be very devastating. There's even another program, the Halt Program, where there's a van that goes around in the community and provides a brown bag lunch to individuals in the community. So we know in Forsyth County, we have areas that are food deserts. When school is closed, often our children don't eat. And I just am so thankful that you see fit to make certain that we have the summer program in place during this summer months when the children are out of school. Food is important to everyone, but even more important to a growing and developing mind, body, and brain. We cannot expect children to be ready to learn when they are hungry or hyper-focused on when they're going to receive their next meal. Brain development is greatly impacted when there is not proper nourishment. The summer meals program is a much-needed program in Forsyth County. Our students will continue to have meals even during the summer months when they are out of school. Thank you for your continued support for the development of our students even during the summer months. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tripp?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm going to talk on Project Impact, just some of my questions and concerns and comments. Project Impact is a good idea and a concept if it was equally for all, but it seems to fit a narrow outcome, if reached, and for a short period of time. It can't address any of the real factors that led to this situation and caused due to grading by Raleigh and Washington of some of the schools, which they shouldn't have done. In other words, there are other problems like the political backbiting in Forsyth County that continues to go on, and everybody's not on the same page or want even the same outcomes. I have, I've heard different comments about Project Impact, like why throw good money after bad, which is a normal comment when you hear anybody putting money into a project like this. Second, one, I'm really surprised at, why not spend it on other groups of students that would make better use of the help that they would be getting and be more appreciative of what is being done? I don't subscribe to either of these or all the narrow parameters of the school system either. There are other things that I see need to be spelled out more clearly. First, are those that are doing the project, are they going also supplying the county and audit help to ensure that the money isn't wasted? The reason for this is you can buy almost anything at school level. All you need is an account number, an invoice, and a canceled check at the end of the year, and almost nobody questions it. And this has been going on for decades. This is nothing new. If it seems, I also have doubts about giving blanket grants to schools without strong audit controls. Secondly, is there really a need to waste some of the money on leadership classes that should go to the help target students? The school system has been doing training for years, and the comments I have heard haven't been all that flattering. Lastly, so far, there has been no comment on the ordinary citizen being able to contribute to the project in some way, or is this the intent for only the wealthy to contribute? If it sounds like I don't have faith in the process, you would be wrong. But I have concerns that a fair percentage of the money will be wasted, and we'll be back here in a few years with the same problems if everybody isn't on board. If everybody has a different outcome and a different agenda, then why do it? Just wasting money and wasting children's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. That concludes our public comments on agenda items, and we now move into discussion items. And first up, Dr. Emery, to discuss Project Impact.
And I promise that Mr. Tripp and I didn't get together ahead of time and set this up, so I just want to do a quick update, and I will try maybe to touch on some of the questions. Before I do that, I want to say thank you to the guys in the house, and I think that we're mostly guys, who are responsible for this awesome new logo behind our board. It looks tremendous. I know a lot of time and effort went into picking the right colors and making it look good, and a lot of measuring and work, and it looks just really nice, so thank you for that. My original intent in talking about Project Impact was to really talk about a process for how we secure those funds and how we include our own board in that. I want to thank you all. We had great attendance last week at the launch, and we appreciate your support of this. I know you know by now that the dollars are governed by the Winston-Salem Foundation and a governing board that has broad representation across our community, and that board has one remaining position, and that is a parent who they will actually select to serve with them. We will receive those funds the same way we do the peer project, which is we need to design the project, what is the intended purpose, what is the budget, and also what is the metric by which we will measure effectiveness of it before we submit it for funding. And so one of the other wonderful things about Project Impact is that part of the dollars are there for us to support evaluation. The folks who have funded so far realize we don't have limitless resources in our research and evaluation department. The other premise going into this is that if we measure something over a one-to-two-to-three year period and we don't find we're getting results, we have the ability to stop it and shift and go to another strategy. So initially, and as you all may know, the bulk of this is meant to expand opportunities for children to have a quality pre-K experience prior to entering kindergarten in our school system. And I'm not going to go into all the stats, most of you know them by heart, but generally we have 11 to 1,200 students who qualify annually for our pre-K programs that we do not have the funding or the spaces to serve. And so this will give us an opportunity to try over the years to expand that. It also helps us with interventions, opportunities to serve children, particularly in grades K through three, to help us accelerate our third grade reading achievement goal. Some of the conversations we've had have been around what is very successfully now implemented with reading interventionists, and we're starting to see some really good results at first grade. We just submitted another Reading Railroad grant to the federal government that has funded the beginning part of that, which has also been incredibly successful. So where do we have successful strategies that we could expand and extend to more children? The first two pieces out of the gate, I wanted you to be aware of because you will be seeing that request with the budgets and the amounts we're requesting before they go to the Winston-Salem Foundation. And we are putting the final touches on the, I've been calling them Kinder Camps, the official name is Pathway 2K, and I guess I got attached to my name and the group named it something else, so I'm going to have to relearn that. But we have 10 three-week summer programs that will be throughout the district, and the invited targeted population are the children who have been on these waiting lists or who have not been served by any formal type of pre-K. And we are fully believing, and the research supports, that there are things that can happen in three weeks that make these children better prepared to enter kindergarten. And that will be our first group that in fact we start tracking progress and success to look over time at these extra opportunities that they have to be successful. The second piece is we have, we're thinking we will have, when we finally get this, about three to five additional pre-K classrooms in fall of 2016. Originally, we weren't planning to scale up too much until the fall of 2017, and our funders have said, "If you've got places you can do this and people you can hire, we'd prefer you get started." So Amy Nail and Steve have been working with our pre-K committee. I will tell you, since this announcement last week, I've got lots of principals saying, you know, "I'm ready, all you got to do is just tell me." So I think that's exciting that people know that that possibility is out there. I also appreciate that our staff has helped me with some clarification that I do want to make here, which is none of these funds can be used to supplant. This is all extra. This is all on top of. So there's no, "Okay, we've been paying for this, now Project Impact's going to..." All of these will be additional supports to students. And again, they have to have a plan, a budget, and a metric for how we will measure whether they're working. There also is a long-term plan here, and part of the design of this is to pick strategies that if after the six-year funding period, we can prove have an impact on our children, particularly on reading in this community, that then we look beyond the businesses who have supported it or the individuals who contribute, and we look for a steady stream of revenue to support it. One of those ways could also be that we, as a district, decide we're going to not fund some things and fund these things because we know over time that they have proven to get us a better result. But we are incredibly grateful for the gift of a six-year interval to really look to see if we can measure an improved impact, particularly on reading, for children in grades kindergarten through three. I do want to address that there will be no blank grants, no one's just going to get money. I'm not going to, I think people were under the impression last week that someone gave me $45 million. So at every juncture for every project, we will go back to this governing board, and we will have to make our case. One of the other neat things about the governing board is they will have two ex officio experts who are not local, and they will be folks that they will ask, "Are these sound strategies?" So not only is it to help us, but, I mean, not only to monitor, but to maybe bring some ideas that we might not be aware of to this adventure. I also think that one of the reasons that businesses wanted to go through the Winston-Salem Foundation is that that belongs to everyone in this community. There are individuals who have contributed, there are businesses who have contributed. Certainly, there is no limit if anyone wants to support this effort. I think that the foundation is very happy to work with anyone who would like to do So I'm hopeful that this is an opportunity for us to change some of that perception that it won't make a difference. I don't think any of us are entering this thinking that this won't make a difference. In fact... One of those ways could also be that we as a district decide we're going to not fund some things and fund these things because we know over time that they have proven to get us a better result. But we are incredibly grateful for the gift of a six-year interval to really look to see if we can measure an improved impact particularly on reading for children in grades kindergarten through three. I do want to address that there will be no blank grants, no one's just going to get money. I'm not going to, I think people were under the impression last week that someone gave me $45 million. So at every juncture for every project, we will go back to this governing board, and we will have to make our case. One of the other neat things about the governing board is they will have two ex officio experts who are not local, and they will be folks that they will ask, "Are these sound strategies?" So not only is it to help us, but, I mean, not only to monitor, but to maybe bring some ideas that we might not be aware of to this adventure. I also think that one of the reasons that businesses wanted to go through the Winston-Salem Foundation is that that belongs to everyone in this community. There are individuals who have contributed, there are businesses who have contributed. Certainly, there is no limit if anyone wants to support this effort. I think that the foundation is very happy to work with anyone who would like to do So I'm hopeful that this is an opportunity for us to change some of that perception that it won't make a difference. I don't think any of us are entering this thinking that this won't make a difference. In fact, the beauty of this kind of a gift is the incredible responsibility that comes with it, and so that's not lost on us either. This is an enormous investment in us as a district, and so we have to, we have to make it work, and we have to do it well. So I just wanted to prepare you, you will be seeing fairly shortly these two pieces, and while you don't necessarily have to approve them, I would really like for this board to bless. I think it sends a nice message to the governing board, and so right now, since we're getting a good start on it, we anticipate being back, and you will have it to look at ahead of time, but we would ask you to just say, yes, we think this is reasonable ask, and that will be our process going forward. So if you have questions, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. First, I am so excited that we are getting such a tangible gift from the community saying that the well-being of all of our children is not just individual, but it's collective, that we belong to each other, and that this really says in a very tangible way that people believe in our kids. So I am so excited about that. And I love the Pathway to kindergarten, Kinder Camps, I think they're going to really be a big difference, and by the time school opens for those kids, they're going to feel at home in the building, and that's wonderful.
Other questions? I would just like to say how thankful I am for the Winston-Salem Foundation for hosting us last week and the focus to be on education, and then what a great launch for our Impact Project, as well as all of those who have worked tirelessly behind the scenes to put this together. So what a huge investment from all of our community, our business community, to really understand, and I think they said it so well, an investment in our future for the community and really looking at this as an economic development investment as well. So really caring about, caring about the future of Forsyth County and our future, and that's our children. But I also want to thank, I know that not everything happens that we see that goes on behind the scenes to put things together. So when I thank Dr. Emery, I know that's also thanking the entire staff, but really and truly, I believe without the buy-in to, we had a great salesman, let's just say that. I think Dr. Emery did a great job working with our business community and other partners to really have them understand our needs very clearly, and also to know that we are going to be held accountable and that we're all in, we're not making excuses, we want to start to see things shift and change, and so thank you, Dr. Emery, for your investment and working with that for quite a bit of time to make Project Impact happen. So thank you. Other comments?
I just want to say that it really does my heart good to think about these little kids that are coming in that haven't had the opportunities that a lot of our kids have had, to be, not to know how to stand in line, not to know how to go and eat somewhere out, not to know what it's like to have food, shelter, and good things in their life at an early, early age. And I think it is a blessing, I want to thank the Winston-Salem Foundation, and it just lights your light up to think about these kids that are going to be coming in and going to have this opportunity before they enter school, because that's kind of scary, before they enter school and to get an example of such goodness. And I want to thank everybody that's part of this. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item for discussion, and that's the 2016 Summer Meals Program.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. One of the action items on your agenda this evening is the extension of the food service contract with Chartwell's to be able to offer summer meals to our students and continue to provide breakfast and lunch service. And so, one thing I want to mention for the benefit of the public is, I think a lot of people don't realize who these meals are available to. A lot of people think that these meals are available just to the students that go to our schools, and they're available to any children, zero to 18 years of age, anywhere in our county, anybody that's visiting our county. They can come and participate in this program and have access to that. And so whether you are across town, visiting a friend at the pool or at the park, or in your own neighborhood, if one of these sites is near you, you are more than welcome to join us. We do try to place all of our summer meal sites either on bus routes or in schools that are embedded in communities so that those families have easy walking access. A lot of the programs, we cover all of the summer school programs as well, so that all the students that are coming for additional educational opportunities all summer long have access to breakfast and lunch every single day. A number of the schools that we select have YMCA programs throughout the summer as well, and so there's a lot of services taking place. And so, you can see on this slide that we do have our breakfast and our lunch meal times for the benefit of the families at home watching. And then these are the 20 sites that we have selected this year. Again, they are all very easily accessible to many of the families that are in need. Earlier in public comment, you mentioned that a lot of these students, we have 56% free and reduced students in our district, and a lot of those students, they get one, if not two, meals a day in our schools. And when summer comes, they don't have access to those meals at home, and so you see a lot of schools doing the backpack program, doing extensions, and so on. So it's really a great program. And one thing that we started two years ago, when the district moved to a four-day summer schedule, we wanted to ensure that there were meals offered on Fridays to those students, and they had one additional day worth of meals. And so, we had some community partners back then, and I am pleased this year that Chartwell's is extending their funding to us to be able to cover those Friday meals. And so, we will send those home on Thursdays with the families. We do have a liability release waiver just to make sure that the families understand what's a part of the meal, if there's any allergies and those kinds of things. We administer lanyards so we can recognize those students whose families have signed off to say that they can get those meals to take home, and so they have something when we're not in session. And then the last thing I'll leave you with this evening is our community eligibility provision. We began this program in the 14th, 15th school year, and we started with 24 sites, and the community eligibility provision allows us to service students free breakfast and lunch based on site rather than based on free and reduced meal applications. And so, for all the sites that you see listed up here, every child that attends that school is able to have access to free breakfast and free lunch, lessening the burden on a lot of our families. Last year, we were, I'm sorry?
That is so wonderful.
Thank you. Last year, we were able to extend that to 32 sites. Based on numbers and running the data this year, we will still be at 32 sites, and I am hopeful that as we watch trends in different information, that we will be able to continue to expand that over the years and provide additional service. And then just to leave you with a few numbers for the past couple of years, the number of service days so far from August to April was a little bit different over the last two years by two days, but you can see that all in all, for this school year, we've served just over 4 million lunches. Last year was about 4.1 million. And so, on average, between breakfast and lunch, you're looking at about 42,000 meals served to our students a day. There's definitely still a gap there. There are a number of students that are eligible for free and reduced meals that still are not eating breakfast or lunch at schools that we really want to hope to capture through menu innovation and other programs that we have available out there that we'll be looking at over the next few years. And I do just want to say a huge thank you to the 550 employees that we have that service these meals with love every single day. You all have any questions for me this evening?
Have questions? Lauren, thank you for what you do. We always enjoy hearing from you, but I know it's not easy, and you always are thanking the staff and understanding the great things that happen in the buildings, and we also want to thank Amanda and our great partnership with Chartwell's. It's, we do so much for, not only for our students, but for the community at large, and we're really happy about that partnership and what you do, and thank you for all of your hard work, both of you.
Thank you, we're great to be part of it.
Mr. Walker?
One of the things, for the sake of our students and our families, that we really need some help in our community educating is that along the same time we're doing summer feeding programs, you may, if you turn on WXI in the morning, they're having food drives for the same cause with Second Harvest. What we'd really like for them to do is get that food from those folks, get collective from the food drive, but come eat with us in breakfast and lunch and save that food for nights and weekends. And if we can help get that word in our community so that these families, you know, come out and take advantage of these programs for breakfast and lunch and utilize and really work this in a smart manner. It's a partnership, we've struggled a little bit, we're trying to get everybody at the table to educate those families to hold on and save that food and come take advantage of it. So I just, it's not part of the agenda tonight, but I thought it would be great if we could help get that word out to our community.
Do we have a list of all the sites that at Second Harvest can hand out or to any of the other food sites to just give families when they're picking up food during the summer?
We do.
We do, so we do hand those out to people when picking up food?
Are you talking about for the summer meal sites to advertise that information?
Yeah.
We do. We'll do flyers in all the schools to send home in the parent packets, and then we do things on the bus as well, and then we will go out to the different community outreach programs, Second Harvest, Crisis Ministries, and spread the word with them as well and pass out flyers so that they can spread that word.
Perfect, thank you.
So one of the other things we've had some conversation about is maybe when WXI is doing that live shot, that we scroll across the bottom of the screen, our summer feeding sites, so that that word is out there for folks to look at. So I just wanted to bring that to attention.
Summer meals.
I'm sorry. Been here too long. I appreciate you.
I appreciate you too.
But I think it's a great way for us to try to educate our families to take advantage of that.
I think piggybacking, oh, I'm sorry. Piggybacking on that, last week, one of the messages we heard very clearly is these are the kinds of stats that are really important, that help illuminate that we're, you know, we're not just a third grade reading scorer, and I don't know whether that's Channel 2, but I think it's really powerful to look at, you know, you look at a gap, but I look at that and go, "Oh, my gosh, 42,000 lunches a day," and I think we need to start talking like that. I think taking last summer stats to Daryl's point and part of this advertising, how many meals did we serve last summer every day? I think those are important pieces that sort of help get the message out, but embed it in a really positive message. And I also just want to say, y'all do a great job, and we need to do a better job of lifting up these numbers because most programs around the state and the country are not seeing the success that has been a long history here. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I also did want to say, because I think many people in our community have no idea that it's 56% of our children, 56% are on free and reduced lunch, and most, I know people talk to me all the time about the way county schools, districting on the no more than any child being in a school that's 40% free or reduced lunch. That's not a possibility in Forsyth County, the numbers don't add up. But what I did want to say about Chartwell's that I really do appreciate is that you always are working on improvement. I have, every single year, you are engaging our students, you're engaging, you know, you do ways of having the culinary students cooking and creating recipes, you are always trying to come up with healthier options and really measuring what's happening in our schools. And I think a lot of people think of school lunch and they remember, "Oh, when I was a kid, school lunch was..." I couldn't be more impressed with the constant improvement that you are all committed to in our district, and thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Your partnership has been very, very valuable to all of our students.
I just want to say one thing, and I wanted the public to know about this. These girls are so terrific that they had a choice out of what kids could pick to eat, and you will never believe the two vegetables they picked, cabbage and collards. That is going a long ways, I tell you, in getting kids interested in the vegetables, and especially those two vegetables. So these ladies excel at getting the kids to eat the right things. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I'll call on Theo Helm to discuss the moving of an early release day number three on the 2016-2017 calendar.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Jones, Board, Dr. Emery. When the Board approved the calendar for 2016-17 last year, it set our six early release days, one of which is on October 19th. As it turns out later, we found out that that is when the PSAT is scheduled, and although that's not a required test, a really large number of 10th and 11th graders take that test, and so our high school principals have said that it would really make things less complicated and help the students and help their staffs if we could move that day to a different, move that early release day to a different day. So after talking to them and senior staff, we proposed moving that day from October 19th to November 2nd. So that is before you tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. So I'll call on Rebecca Young to talk to us about the International Baccalaureate Organizational Contract for Professional Development.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak to this contract tonight. So the IB Primary Years Program is the program Spies Global Elementary is looking to provide. We, as many of you know, the team at Spies Global has worked extremely hard on their contract for candidacy for the IB. They've submitted it just recently in May, and they're very excited to receive feedback from IB. The candidacy process can span anywhere between one and three years, during which time the school will have a visit from an IB consultant, and they'll be able to work remotely with that consultant on their professional development needs and preparing their educators for implementation of the program. As part of the process and part of the requirement, all of the school leadership and faculty must be trained in IB philosophy and approach and practice. We have started that process, the main leadership has been trained, we have a wonderful coordinator who is herself an IB trainer and visits schools throughout the country, so we have a wonderful resource there. And now we're looking to expand that in preparation for authorization. So the contract is for an IB Category 3 Inquiry Workshop. Inquiry is the platform that underpins all of IB's programs, and so it's the essential focus for carrying out and implementing the program. We are very fortunate because we do have an IB coordinator who is also a trainer at the school. She has provided a lot of the Level 1 and 2 required trainings to prepare the educators for this advanced higher-level piece. So we're very excited to be able to potentially bring an IB educator into Spies Global this summer to train between 20 and 25 of the staff at Spies Global. The cost is $5.50 per person for this training, which is a significant savings on a typical training for IB. Typical registration fees when we send teachers away for training are between $750 and $1,000 per person, and that does not include accommodation or travel cost. So by bringing the trainer in, we are providing a significant savings in training all of our faculty at once, which provides invaluable benefits for collaboration moving forward. The topics for the workshop include learning theory and, oops, excuse me, learning theory and pedagogy for the IB Primary Years Program, includes assessment processes and best practices for primary years learners, and it also will focus on subject-specific content area skills and trans- it also will focus on subject-specific content area skills and transdisciplinary units, which is an essential part of the PYP framework. So again, another, besides being a requirement of authorization and training all of our teachers, one of the reasons we work together to try to bring an IB trainer into Spies Global this summer is so that we could provide that training all at once for the educators who will be working together. In the PYP, it's a very unique framework in that educators are working on developing transdisciplinary units around six specific themes at this level. And so by bringing in a workshop trainer in and training all of the educators together, they're able to then collaborate on creating these transdisciplinary units and providing the assessment that will be appropriate for that moving forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the professional development opportunity, if you have one.
Questions, Board? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? No questions? Okay. Thank you. I'll call on Mr. Mark Johnson for the Building and Grounds Committee report.
We approved the disposition of surplus properties and mobile classroom trailers. We had a brief discussion on solar panel usage and biodiesel usage and exploring those opportunities further. We approved going forward with the idea of allowing community members to come in and help sweep our parking lots. Child nutrition update for what happened last year and this year. Thank you all for your partnership in all you do. And we had a preview of Bond Project priority discussions. We looked at a preliminary list that was based on plugging in to the years of spending based on where dollar figures fit, and we will continue those discussions based on dollar figures and community input.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And we discussed a bus tracking app. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. That concludes our discussion items for this evening, and we will move into our action items, which we have several. So the first is to consider approval of addendum to the food service agreement for the 2016 Summer Meals Program. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm second.
Okay, sir. Mr. Singletary and Ms. Mottzinger, any questions, discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Consider a change to the 2016-2017 calendar to move the early release day number three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, second. Mr. Singletary, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Consider approval of the International Baccalaureate Organization Contract for Professional Development.
So moved.
So I have a motion from Ms. Mottzinger, second from Ms. Calvert-Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor? Consider approval of the Budget Amendment Number Five and Transfer Number Five. Do I have a motion? Ms. Clark, do I have a second? Mr. Singletary, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Consider approval of disposition of surplus equipment, mobile classroom trailers. Do I have a motion?
Sir.
Okay, Ms. Calvert-Hayes is first, and Mr. Vic Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Consider approval of a lease with City Church Winston to use the auditorium at Kennedy High School. Do I have a motion?
Sir.
All right, Mr. Singletary and Mr. Vic Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That concludes our action items for the evening and brings us to our consent agenda. We have two items, approval of minutes of the April 26, 2016 meeting, and the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Singletary, do I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Vic Johnson, all in favor? Thank you. So we have no speakers from the floor at this time, and that will, we will, we will move rooms. We are going to have a discussion as a board on our core values. It's an exercise we are having across the district, and so that we can see one another and have a room that's a little more conducive for discussion, we will actually move to room 223, and we will convene back in five minutes. Thank you.